Okay, Jackson, they're ready. You can go ahead and record.
Recording in progress.
I'd like to call the zoning commission regular meeting to order on August 4th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes only, and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation or after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. I believe our first order of business is the review and approval of the zoning commission regular meeting minutes from July 7th, 2022. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? And does anyone have any comments or suggested amendments? Oh, sorry, yes.
Fisher?
Here.
Crew?
Here.
Marzullo?
Here.
Manley?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
In the audience is trustee Augustine, zoning inspector Wilson.
Trustee Asher.
Okay. And.
Alterna Ingelman, did she get her hurry? She's here as well, she's right behind you.
Oh, she's behind us. We're hiding, I mean.
Okay. All right, and is trustee Sweating virtual?
Yeah, trustee Sweating is not virtual.
Thank you.
Perfect. Now I would like to start with our review of the regular meeting minutes from July 7th, 2022. Are there any suggested amendments?
I have one on page two, fourth paragraph down. I think that's a superfluous sentence, the first one.
So you're just suggesting strike that sentence?
Yeah, because, I mean, I know that's later, like, at the end of the meeting. I don't think we stated that, written at the outset of the meeting.
I was probably just trying to talk about it with respect to these work sessions, not calling it as announced in this meeting. Because then I go on to say that I stated that we'll have opportunities to continue to work on this. I think it probably is what happened.
Okay.
But we can strike that. It's, again, this is not transcript of a meeting. It's just a.
Okay, if it makes sense, then we can leave it. I don't care one way or the other.
I'll entertain a motion either way.
Just leave it.
Are you making a motion to approve as written?
Oh, well, unless anybody else has any other changes.
Yeah?
No. All right, I'll move to approve.
Moved by Marzullo.
I'll second.
Seconded by Crew, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes have been approved. It's okay with everyone, I'd like to skip the old business for now and move on to the new business, starting with the final site plan review for Phase 1 of the Reserve at Pine Valley subdivision.
Yes.
Is there a representative coming? The subdivision?
Matt Duncan, Davie Resource Group, 1310 Sharon Copley Road, Sharon Center. I don't really have any updates, other than the only change was there originally was 31 sublots, now there's 30. They combined and made a couple bigger lots. That's really the only change from the preliminary platting. So I guess, if anybody has any questions.
Perfect. Thank you. Just a reminder that this is just a Phase 1B. We've already reviewed the full plan as part of the preliminary review, and also the Phase 1A, which includes this entrance. So this is predominantly just lots.
We, if I might, we, a couple places we referred this to this as, let's see, Pine Valley. We referred to it as something different. Reserve at, it was Phase 2, I guess it is. So the real name is 1B, right? The first one being 1A, this one being 1B.
Correct?
Correct. Okay. I'm sorry, second phase, not Phase 2. Well, I see it on some stuff.
Okay. Are there any other questions or concerns before I move through the checklist? Nope. All right, we'll quickly go through the final site plan review worksheet, just to confirm that everything has been done. An accurate legal description prepared by or certified by a registered surveyor of the state? Yes. Property location map showing existing property lines, easements, utilities, and street right-of-way? That's okay. Final site plan prepared by a qualified professional and drawn to an appropriate scale? That should meet that. Location of all public right-of-ways, private streets, and common drives? There really aren't any on this face, other than the main drive, I guess. Location and configuration of off-street parking and loading areas, the arrangement of internal and in-out traffic movement, including access roads and drives, pen lane, and other pavement parkings to direct and control parking and circulation? I think it satisfies. Proposed and existing fences, walls, signs, and lighting? There are no signs or lighting within this phase, I believe. It was all within Phase 1A. Location and layout of all proposed and existing outdoor storage areas, including storage of waste materials and location of trash receptacles? It doesn't really apply here. Sanitary sewers, water, and other utilities, including fire hydrants, is required and proposed drain and stormwater management? I think we satisfied that. Dimensions of all buildings, building spaces, setbacks, parking areas, drives, and walkways? I think we satisfy that. A topographic survey of the proposed development area with contour lines at two-foot intervals? Should meet that. Existing vegetation features, including large isolated trees, one foot or more in diameter, wooded areas, wetlands, and other environmental features? I think that that's been covered. Proposed landscaping and screening plans indicating the preliminary description of the location and nature of existing and proposed vegetation, landscaping, and screening elements and any existing trees to be removed? I don't think that there is much in the way of site clearing that has to be done yet, correct?
I'm not familiar with what is currently out there. So I don't know as far as clearing limits and stuff, what's going on.
It's already been cleared already.
New calls were just put in for this section.
Right, this face.
I was out there today, and it looks.
Perfect. Preliminary architecture plans for the proposed development or use showing exterior elevations prepared by a professional engineer, architect, or surveyor, which shall contain their respective seals? We've seen the signage. A summary table showing total acres of the proposed development, number of acres devoted to each type and use, including streets and open space, number of dwelling units by type? That's been satisfied. For a phased development, proposed schedule of completion for improvements that are designed to relate to, benefit, or be used by the entire development? Such schedules shall be submitted with the first phase and shall relate completion to such improvements to completion of one or more phases of the development? Oh, that would have been done as Phase 1, this is now the final phase. A road call for permit when required by the Medina County Highway Engineering Department? A letter from the appropriate public agency stating that the proposed development or use conforms or will conform to all applicable sanitary sewer, water, grading, and surface drainage, flooding, floodplain, and wetland regulations, if applicable? I don't think that there's anything that's needed. Perfect. This is not a conservation development. Other information necessary for the evaluation of the final site plan is deemed necessary by the zoning inspector. In the case of subdivision review, the zoning commission review for zoning compliance only. I don't think there's been any other additional information requested by you, correct?
No.
So you have everything meets.
Yeah.
And the applicant shall pay the fees as required by the, set forth by the trustees, and that has been completed. So if there is nothing else on this one, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final site plan? So move the Reserve at Pine Valley, Phase 1B? So moved by Manley? All seconded, seconded by Fisher? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? If any, it's been approved. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the preliminary site plan review of the Stony Hill Road subdivision. This subdivision is being proposed at the corner of Stony Hill and Mattingly. It was initially proposed two years ago as, under the name of Bailey subdivision. It's since been moved to a different developer, and the roadway has been moved further south on Stony Hill relative to the original proposal. This proposal was in front of the planning commission last night. Planning services had recommended a stub street to a 55 or 57-acre parcel to the north of the subdivision, because they were concerned about landlocking that lot. The township trustees made a resolution against or disfavoring the stub street. The developer also did not want the stub street, and I spoke last night and suggested that our comprehensive plan does not support the need for a stub street there. The planning commission ultimately agreed and voted 9 to 2 to adopt the staff recommendations absent the stub street. I believe you're the representative?
Yes.
For that one.
Matt Duncan, Davie Resource Group, 1310 Sharon Copley Road, here for the Stony Hill subdivision. It's zoned R1, 74-acre lot. We're proposing 24 sublots. The project is code compliant by right use, and we're not asking for any variances. So it meets the zoning. Other than that, I'm here.
Here for questions? Any entrance signage? Are you putting it on one of the sublots, then? Is that the intent?
Correct.
I don't think, there are no wells on this property, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
And the, you're filling in what it amounts to pond right now to build the road? And that's already been reviewed and approved?
Has not been reviewed and approved, but we selected that location due to site distance. As you know, there's some topo out there. So we've done an initial review of site distance, which will be reviewed by the county once we submit engineering plans. But that location, that's the reason that that location was picked.
They moved the entrance.
Significantly south. I think it was around 100 feet from that corner of Mattingly and Stony Hill, and it's down 500 and some feet.
Right.
563 feet. Was there an old farmhouse initially? I know when it was first presented, there was. Has that already been removed, or is that still there?
It will be.
It will be removed? Okay. Some of these lots have some significant, it looks like, tope, you know, grating to them, but I assume that they're.
Yeah.
They're buildable.
Yes.
And outside of that, I didn't see any other issues with this.
Then the sanitary, then no issues, right?
No, this will be septic, there is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's plenty of space for septic and backup system?
Well, yes.
Okay.
It will have public water.
Okay.
Is that coming in from the west? It's coming in from Stony Hills, isn't it? I recall to the west, there's a pretty steep ravine, it's there. Yeah, so nothing's coming through the ravine. Between the two subdivisions?
Yeah, I've never actually walked back there. It's surprising that Medina County initially wanted that, that would have been a nightmare.
Stub street, it would have been.
Yeah.
That would have been a challenge.
Are there any other comments or questions before we move forward with the checklist? Inspector Wilson, did you have anything else on this one?
No. Everything looks good from our zoning standpoint for regulation size and show board.
So if there's nothing else, I'll start going through the checklist, and feel free to interrupt if you do have any other questions or concerns. Is there a property location map? Yes. The location of existing structures within the development area and access points? I don't, I don't think that this shows the current structure, but it's being removed ultimately anyway, so.
I believe it's shown on the front there, yeah. Or at least one existing building is shown there.
There is an existing building in sub lot 20, I think.
Oh, yeah, I see, thank you. The general, let's see, the general location of existing buildings, parking, and access drives on parcels within 100 feet of the site? Yes. A topographic survey of the proposed development with contour lines at two-foot intervals? Yes. Existing major vegetation features, wooded areas, and large isolated trees with one foot or more diameter? Yes. Locational wetlands is depicted on the delineation produced by a professional wetland specialist licensed by the state of Ohio. The floodplain boundary and floodplain elevation is delineated by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Rivers and streams and their related river or stream bank ponds and watercourses? Delineation of existing drainage patterns on the property? Yes. Existing wells and well sites, there are none. The general location of development areas identified by use, including any feasible lots and restricted open spaces? If part of the proposed project, there are no restricted open spaces or common lands. The general layout of the proposed circulation system for vehicles and pedestrians? Other proposed public ways, access points in the parking and survey system? Yes. A summary table showing total acres of the proposed development? The number of acres devoted to each type of use, including streets and open space? And the number of dwelling units by type? Yes. Proposed phases if the project is to be developed in stages, including the phase during which common facilities are anticipated to be constructed? This will be a single-phase development? This is not a conservation development. Other reasonable information as the zoning commission may require in order to evaluate the general concept of the proposed development? In the case of subdivision review, the zoning commission reviews for zoning compliance only. Subdivision approval, disapproval, or approval of modifications is determined by the Medina County Planning Commission, which they did last night. The development should be designed to preserve the natural amenities for the site. For example, building location and placement should be developed with consideration given to minimizing the removal of trees and changes of topography. I don't think that there's much in the way of changing topography at all, so. The development will result in harmonious grouping of buildings within the proposed development and in relation to existing and proposed uses on adjacent property? Yes. The development will have properly designed open spaces that meet the objectives of the township's master policy plan and the zoning resolution. And I would say for the most part, yes, on that one as well. I'd entertain a motion to approve of the preliminary plan for the, what's the name? It's Rock Ridge Estates, for Rock Ridge Estates? So moved by Marzullo? Hang on a second.
I just, I just want to say, this is, and I don't have a problem with it. I have a personal problem. This is why I liked when we were talking about developments, how we could prevent being able to see the development, right? And this is like the example. It's not a conservation development, so we can't put that requirement in. But you drive by Stony Hill, which used to be farmland here, and now you'll just see another development, so.
It won't. We're going to do mountainous stuff along those lines. Trust me, if you look at Skyland, you do the same thing down there.
That's what I'm afraid of. I can't, I cannot see Skyland when I go down Stony Hill, but I can certainly see it from 303. And that is my thing. I just don't want to see the development. So, again, it meets the requirements of zoning, but my personal opinion. Yes, I know, sir. I'm just stating.
I know.
Most of us have those Hinkley Rural signs.
I wish I cared.
And I wish you did too, because it would be so much easier to work with you, but.
I don't, I don't think that that's appropriate. So can we just, let's continue and move on?
I'm done. I just wanted to make that statement because that's how I feel on the developments that come through and come across.
And I do think that that's a good point, and, you know, one of the things that we try to really do with conservation, that we have the opportunity to do with conservation? Is push it back.
Right.
And so we would be able to provide that 300-foot frontage if this was a conservation. So when you look at these pros and cons, certainly with a, with a subdivision, you're seeing the lots are more spread out, although if you look at them, they're quite deep lots. They're not really that wide of lots, because they're trying to fit as many as they can, which is understandable. But you're not going to see a big open space between homes, and you're also seeing them right along the main road. And if you have a conservation development, the negative of that is you're fitting homes more tightly together. The positive of that is that you are able to push them back.
Push them back, and you don't see.
From the roadway. So that's certainly one of the, you know, pros and cons of each.
I think it's terrible that somebody would come in here and go on record of saying they wish they cared and don't in this township, because there's a lot of residents here that do care. I'm curious, how many acres of trees are there on this parcel out of 74 acres? What would you estimate?
I don't know that I'm.
60%?
I don't know that I'm comfortable to say an exact percentage. I mean, you can see there's lines on, showing the existing vegetation, so.
So it absolutely meets the requirements, and there goes, I don't know what, another 30 acres of trees? 40 acres of trees?
I think they will do their best. It's, they're not, it's not their intent to cut down the trees, so they will keep as many as they can.
I hope that's the case. I've seen enough developments go in that are just.
I think it offers the, you know, the future homeowner value as well to keep the trees. So I think the goal is to save as many as possible.
Thank you. Thank you. So I have a motion. I do not have a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Manley. Do we want to do a roll on this one?
Sure.
With Marzullo.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Crew?
It meets the standards, yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Bowman?
I'm with Crew, it meets the standards, so yes. Thank you.
So the preliminary site plan for the Rock Ridge Estates has been approved? Thank you.
I think you should certainly note the comment that was made by, I presume that's Mr. Samodi over there, about what he thinks of this township.
It's terrible.
And he loves it.
Not anymore.
Do you now have those prompts? Are you believing?
I can.
That's fair, color is not. No, that's perfect. If you're able to do that, yeah. Why don't we take a, just a four-minute recess? Let her copy them. She's going to make copies of the proposed amendments, because a few of the people asked for them, and then we'll resume. All right. So we'll, we'll just resume at 7:30.
All changes, you had to change tracking on, right, in that document?
Yeah. I don't think I still have it on my computer. So I wanted it in a hard copy, because I guess I could pull it up. Can you give me that?
Sheriff Fisher, do you want this muted?
Go ahead and do it, yeah.
Go ahead and mute it, yeah.
Are we ready? Perfect. We can just keep the chatter down because we're, we're recording again. Just a reminder. Thank you. All right, I will. I think we should, can proceed to back to the old business now and resume our discussion from last time. We'll start with the proposed text amendments for conditional permitted uses within the B1 and B2 districts and the potential creation of a B3 district. Let me share my screen. I'll see how this works. It's perfect. So up here I have the, in red you'll see the B2 districts. There's one B2 district along Boston West 130th Corner. The other B2 district is Hinkley Town Center. And the current B1 district is on Center Road and West 130th corner. And so at our last meeting, what we spoke about doing was separating the B2 in the northern west, northwest corner of the township from town center. Go ahead.
I, I may have missed her, but don't forget the Buzzards Cove, B1. I don't know if you heard that. If you mentioned that.
No, let me zoom.
Because I think that's pretty pertinent.
Yep. Now you can see it. B1 by Buzzards Cove. So in our last discussion, we discussed the creation of a B3 district. We also heard from several residents about the potential creation for a B1, B4 district, excuse me, with Buzzards Cove. And so I think we should start our discussion there again to try to figure out what we're going to do with that property, because that was dictating some of what we were doing up in the, in the town, in the B3 district. And so I looked at the Buzzards Cove district, and there's parcels that are .54 acres, .62 acres, .93 acres, 2.26 acres, 1.2 acres, 9.72 acres. So a fair number of those lots are pretty small. And there was some discussion about whether we wanted to zone that at B4 and make that predominantly outdoor recreation. And while I think that that might be a good idea for Buzzards Cove or for the totality of the property, when we look at these lots as they stand alone, I don't think we can zone a .54 acre lot to be outdoor recreation, because you're essentially rendering that lot potentially valueless. So we'd either have to create another district in which we have yet a limited subset, but still includes some stuff that would allow for a B4 a use within a .54 acre lot, or we maintain it within one of the other three business districts. The other option, of course, is you could make it residential. Residential has as a conditional use, recreation. So if you were really striving to make that recreation, I would say just make it residential. To Mr. Marzullo's point last time, you know, maybe that's not a good idea, because it's a taking of the Buzzards Cove property potentially. And so that's where my head has been this past month as I thought about this, is what do we do about all the small lots? Go ahead, Mr. Marzullo.
So something that occurred to me is really when we're looking at this, rather than creating a third business district, we do have the option to potentially turn the B2 on West 130th and Boston into B1 and the B1 on 606 and Bellis into B2. Instead of, instead of completely creating a brand-new district, just bringing the current outlying districts more in line with what's in that community. I, I don't, I didn't know how to word that at the last meeting. And frankly, I didn't even really come up with it until in between then and now. But that might be a more simplistic solution, rather than perhaps the more elegant solution that we're working with.
So what that would do, though, is expand the uses.
It would expand the uses on, on West 130th and Boston.
Correct.
And bring the uses for B1, or I'm sorry, for Buzzards Cove more in line with the uses here downtown. But I would still recommend going through with adjusting some of the uses in the downtown Hinkley District, the B2 district. And I know we spent a lot of time on the historical center, town center district last time. So I don't know, I don't want to set us back, but it's something else that we can potentially consider.
I'm just wondering what you think might be the advantage to that? Because remember, outside of just the conditional uses, we would also be changing how much of the lot can be utilized for, because the amount that can be buildable is different for a B1 versus a B2. The parking is different for B1 versus B2. So we would be significantly potentially changing what's happening at the corner of West 130th and Boston in order for us to do that.
My question is, would we be significantly changing the environment of that area? Given what's already across the street? I don't know. And that's why I wanted to propose it, let everyone kind of chew on it. I mean, I like hearing other people's thoughts. I don't, rarely do I have the best idea. I like the idea of not, but just jumping back to the prior topic, of Buzzards Cove, of, I'd like to figure out what we're going to do there, because that drives a lot of my decision on where, where we go in terms of what you had just suggested, where, you know, B2, B3, you know, what's in, what's out. Like, is there, you know, I mean, again, just like, man, I'm throwing ideas out there, but what's, what's the harm in, what's the harm in rezoning that to a B4? What's the harm in rezoning it to a residential? And it becomes grandfathered in for its current use and eventually goes non-conforming. It's just like, this bothered me in the last session, and it, and it just, it bothers me now, is it's just this really weird little spot in Hinkley right there. And I get it down by the lake, you know? Maybe it made sense a long time ago. And it's got a nice little use there. But my goodness, you know, just in the conversation we just had, I'd really hate to have one of those conversations where, you know, somebody gets a hold of a decent amount of money, comes in and wants to put something down there right in the park. Right? Like, it just, there's something that just, it doesn't sit right with that. And to build on that, sorry, that kind of goes back to one of the things that I, I really strongly think we need to revisit, which is our definition of an automobile service station.
So there are several definitions I think we need to revisit, one of them being that one. And so. Can you elaborate on that?
Absolutely. I mean, let's, let's look at what, what an automobile service station is as far as the definition. It, I, my personal belief is when, when it was initially put in the code, it was the idea of, all right, this is a gas station. You pull in, little bell dings, someone comes out, fills up your tank. We haven't updated that definition. And now people can come and put up, put in basically a complete automotive repair shop. And it's covered in that definition as opposed to, all right, I want to stop and go. And where do we want that? Because right now, it's pretty much B1, you, you can do it. And that's right in, right next to the, to the Metro Parks. They, if, if someone bought it and they just wanted to throw in a flying J, they could. I'll go a step further. Why do we need automobile service stations, gas stations, whatever it may be? I can get to a dozen of them from my house. They're in Ridgefield, they're north, they're south, they're west. Do we really, do we need that in the township?
To give you a little bit of history, we broke it down last year. We advanced them to the next step.
Could you please speak up?
Sorry. Yes. So last year, we proposed amendments that broke it down into basically what amounted to gas stations versus service stations.
Okay.
And that was advanced all the way to the trustees. And the trustees made the decision at that time that in view of the comprehensive plan audit that was taking place, that, that portion of the proposed amendments, they struck out. So they did not approve of adding, modifying the text to include the changes that we had suggested for the automobile service station. So that was a definition that we reviewed last year. We moved forward with it. It was struck down, and we haven't done anything more with it.
Mr. Chairman, I think you have two residential homes, the Buzzard Coves that are in that.
Three.
Three, that's right, three that are in that district. So there's something to keep in mind, too.
Right. So there are, what did I say? I think there are six parcels. Two, three, four, five. I think there are six parcels. Two of them are owned by Buzzard Cove. Two of them are merged together and have one house on them. And then the other two are separate parcels that each have a house on them, including the .54, is it's an own individual property with a home on it.
I think three are owned by Hinkley Hills property.
Then I'm missing one, because I've got.
And I think three of the six total are substandard as far as being used for business. That is, they don't have enough frontage or enough acreage. Sorry for interrupting.
Oh, where did it go now? Sorry. Let me do an arrow. These are Buzzard's Cove.
Correct.
This is the .54 acre set is owned by, that has a home on it.
Owned by who?
I, I don't.
Hinkley Hills property.
Is it?
Yeah.
And I think we should refer to this as Buzzard Cove. We should refer to it as a corner.
Hinkley, so that one is owned by Buzzard's Cove, but it has a separate home on it, right? And then there's the two, the 2.4 acre lot or so. And then you have another two lots up there that have one home on it. So, I, I, again, I think we continue to go back to before residential two districts. And it all stems on how do we define this section that's a B1 in the middle of town right now? Go ahead, Mr. Manley.
I, I, I don't know why we can't leave it alone. Let's think about this, you know? It's conditional use in there for just for a number of things, which means they have to come before BZA and all that, present plans here and everything. Also means they got to get control of more property, most likely. So I, you'd have, you just, you would have controls that be able to control without going down this road.
Why would they need to control more property?
I just, because I don't think any of those are large enough for what I would consider a decent recreation area of some kind.
I mean.
Maybe a volleyball court or something, but I've been thinking of some.
I mean, you think, you've got the nine point, what is it? Nine, 9.7, 1.2, and .54. You're already coming up on almost 12 acres right there.
I thought he said nine acres. It's 12 acres?
9.7, 1.2, and .54.
Period.
Thank you. That's, that's going to be about 12 acres.
Okay.
And that's all owned by one entity at this point.
But there's, but they are separate parcels, as he pointed out. Six separate parcels would have to be run together.
Correct.
And I just, we're spending a lot of time on something that is down the pike somewhere. Shouldn't we move on to some of these other things that we could get done now?
Well, we can get this done now. And if we wait until 10, 15 years when it's a problem, it's too late.
How about the next year? We have, aren't some of these other cases a little more pressing as deciding B1, B2, and Historical Center is maybe separate even?
I just wanted to show you, this is what Inspector Wilson just provided me. This is, these, the blue that you see are the reparian setbacks on those parcels. So you can see that there's a fair number of setbacks also.
And they're the largest setbacks. They're 120 foot because of the side of the river.
Right.
So, I mean, it's going to be pretty difficult to build anything commercial there.
So if they have 12 acres, it might be half of that buildable?
I don't think so.
Less than half.
I mean, there, there's the, you can see.
Yeah, I can see.
Buildable. With the giant break in between.
I doubt that 50% is builtable.
So something less than 50%. Something less than six acres. No. I still think it doesn't require our, our attention at this time.
I certainly think it, it, you know, we should give it some attention in that if we're rezoning other things, maybe it makes sense to look at a rezoning of this as well. Maybe it makes sense for this to be a B2, B3 instead of a B1. So we are, you know, moving it down into a more restrictive zone.
Well, I think it will just make it residential and let it go.
That would be a, I think if we're doing outdoor recreation, we might as well do that. I don't see any reason to create a B4. I think we would just rezone it residential. Most of those lots are being used for residential as it is. And the Buzzard's Cove probably has almost as much value as two or three parcels as it does as a business. So that would make the most sense to me as well as if we were taking away the business. And again, recreation is, is a conditional use within the residential districts.
So it wouldn't even be illegal, non-conforming, it'd just be legal?
The restaurant would probably be legal.
Yes.
Fair enough.
Yep.
And if they did a haunted barn, which they're not doing again this year, right?
Well, that's right. We told them they couldn't do the outside, and they said that the haunted barn didn't produce enough revenue. So they were not to be legal.
If they were to resume that, that would also not be, I guess, permitted within the residential.
Well, it's, it's considered indoor recreation at this point, which is.
Oh, it's just a barn. So it would be a conditional as well, because it's recreation.
I like that idea of all of the ideas proposed today.
Moving that to residential? And then?
Mr. Pearl. I shouldn't have spoke. I should have just waited.
Go ahead, Mr. Pearl.
I think Hinkley Hills property, oh, I'm sorry, Richard Pearl, 1785 King Road. Hinkley Hills property, who operates a business out of that third lot. That is their mailing address. If you look at our comprehensive plan, it shows the Greenway going right through there. And if you look at the Metro Park's future land acquisition maps, it shows that proper, all that property as, as they're wishing it was, they would like to acquire that property.
You get that from their meeting or your chat?
From their meeting. And I wish I could find the reference, but I will find the reference if you want it.
We should have. It shouldn't be here, so.
Okay.
I don't know if that is overly. I don't know if that is overly informative with respect to zoning anyway, because the park district can purchase it regardless of what it's owned. And I don't think we should zone it based upon, you know, what the park district tends to do. But thank you for the, I always appreciate the knowledge, so. So we're coming back to this again because it's going to influence how we go through the amendments that are proposed. What do we want to do with this section? So here are what I would say, let's keep the three, three districts. I think that that gives us more freedom to, to maneuver through their very distinct areas of town. And that will allow future zoning commissions to relatively easily make adjustments to individual areas that are very far apart from one another relative to town. With respect to the, the corner, the, the area by Bellis, I would suggest we either put that in B three for now and revisit whether we want to move it to residential or if there's the appetite for it now and we can look at moving it to residential now and see how planning services deals with that and also how legal, legal's opinion on it.
Now that the senior apartments are being developed, how much of that B one on West 130th and 303 is still developable? Do you know, Tom?
I think it's just this weird section.
Just that, just this section where Buzzard's Roost is, right?
No. Well, that, that, that's been approved for discount drug mart, right? That's where the discount drug mart should be going. But then behind the apartments, there's also, is there more B one behind where the apartments are located?
When you say behind, you mean?
To the east. Where does the apartments extend all over?
There's 10 acres there that's zone. The.
B one.
Yeah, B one.
Is it gonna be landlocked?
It is.
It is.
Let's see what the goal is there. Which part is landlocked? Right where the division next to the one and B one is, that last, that's that 10 acres to the east of that. So then eventually someone's gonna be pushing to convert the property to the north of that to B one. So hey, now we can.
Certainly, there's gonna be a push at some point for that to be a rectangle.
Or expand.
Almost guarantee that'll happen.
What's that?
Almost guarantee that will happen when the economic thing turns around.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not sure I follow how that is affecting.
No, I'm just, I, I try to look at things big picture because it seems like everyone's trying to play their own pieces like it's game of chess. And I just wanna know what everybody wants. Like I, I wanna know the big picture that everyone's driving to. Everyone keeps trying to pull strings and it's just, look, what picture are we driving to? And let's get everyone on board and go that way. Instead, we got each person trying to do this and that and politicking all the crap that's going on when really we can just say, all right, look, we know we don't want a loves in the middle of, of the metro parks. That's personally what I'm driving at. We need to do something with that particular B one. We're putting an awful lot of time into our, what are design considerations for town center? There hasn't been what, when's the last time a new building was built in town center?
But there's property movement in town center that has the potential. And I actually think town center has far more potential for development than that B one district. Because that B one district, there's no sewer, no water, and there's one vacant. I don't think a loves truck stop is going to park itself in the middle of the residential district when it's probably what, seven or eight minutes to the highway? That's not where you put a truck stop.
Absolutely. I, I'm not, I'm not saying that is what's actually going in there. That's an example of what could go in there. You could put, I mean, what else can we put in? I mean, you, you can put an automobile service station in there. You can put small power equipment in there. All sorts of things that just don't belong in the middle of the residential area right next to the metro parks. All right. And that's why I'm so.
Everything I'm hearing you is.
Emphatic about.
Change that to residential. I don't see anything.
I, I'm, I would be honestly fine with going residential, but.
I don't know how we restricted so much in business that it achieves the goal that you're trying to achieve. We either have it as business, in which case there's always going to probably be the opportunity for some things that you're not going to like in that spot. Or we take it out of business to prevent that from happening. But I don't think we can limit that zone to one or two small items within the business. It has conditional uses within.
Right.
And I'm, I'm very inclined to agree with that.
Inclined to agree with what?
If. If it goes away from being a business district at all into a residential district. A, I think it's much better for the surrounding residential properties. To Mr. Wilson's point, very, with the riparian setbacks, there's very little you can actually build on there anyways. It'd be a great piece of property for a nice home.
I, I was for the residential, so I, I just wanted to clarify where you stood.
No, no, I, I, I don't. That's a good point. Between the riparian setback, setbacks in the business district as they are in a B one, outside of what's there right now, what else are you gonna put on there? Honestly, you could put quite a bit on six acres.
On six acres, but in what envelope? Within it with all the stuff you have to work around?
With all the requirements.
Right.
But then also look at it now, there's already a building, a pretty sizable bond. You could run a retail establishment out of that.
I'm curious, just from, you know, the audience and the trustees, what the sentiment is or, you know, what other thoughts or ideas? Aside from Mr. Pearl, I think he's shared his a couple times.
I'd be more than happy to share my thoughts.
I just wanna. Get up to, go ahead and come up to the podium. Here is just so that we have it, the future land use map. That's in the comprehensive plan. See, I'm looking at.
The dotted green hero is what I was talking about.
Right, that, right.
The dotted, the long dotted green.
That's, yes. My concern with showing this is that the future land use map makes it a neighborhood commercial. And so we will run into planning services. If we were to suggest a rezoning residential, it won't be supported by the comprehensive plan potentially. Neighborhood commercial is probably the closest that you can get to residential, I think. So we'll, we could see what happens with that, but I don't think planning services would be on our.
What does neighborhood commercial mean?
Yeah.
Is that defined in the book anywhere?
In anybody's book.
Exactly.
And was this addressed in the comprehensive discussions?
Nope.
Another thing to remember on this is your setback is 100 foot between business and residential. So that shrinks that envelope even further that you could build something on. That's riparian, then you've got 100 foot setback if it goes against residential. So business is business is only 30 foot.
Yeah, but that, that would actually only apply on the northwestern corner of that property.
Well, that's right, but it's, it's still true.
It would apply on the east. It would apply on the east as well.
It, it wouldn't because of the size of the riparian setback. The riparian setback is already getting.
Yeah, over takes it. Yeah.
I'm gonna wait here, your comment.
Go ahead.
Hey, you can keep talking. That's what you need to do. So.
You get tired, you know?
No, not me. I, well, for one, there are things. That's right. Cindy Engelmann, 2087 Ridge. There are things you could still put on six acres in terms of retail. There are form, small form factor discount stores that you can put on there. And is that what you want across from Hinkley Reservation? I think the concept of exploring rezoning that area to residential or whatever is a great thing to do and to do sooner than later because if the outcome of that should be not favorable, then you know you need to look at doing something else, whatever that something else may be, to ensure you don't have maybe a, you know, box discount store or whatever. So that, and then that takes away a lot of the, you know, do I make, you know, this business permitted, conditional, even available to be there? You just kinda get rid of that whole concept of the, of the B four and just focus that on town, town center, what you want town center to be. And you don't even have to worry about outdoor recreation in town center because is that what you really want in town center? And otherwise, you know, it, you'd have to consider before that I would call like park centered district. And the businesses would have to be centered around the concept of a park. But why even go to that extent if you can just make that residential and, and be done with it and so I think that's a great idea. It's a simple solution. Simple is good.
Big is the lot that Drug Mart's building on?
Oh, golly.
It's five or six.
Something like that.
So smaller than 50% of buildable space on that 12 acres.
What 12 acres?
But the difference is.
That we're talking about.
The difference is you've got two roads, 130th and 303 that are heavy traffic. And then you talk about a service station. The first thing you're gonna do is count the traffic. And there's just not enough traffic down there for a service station.
Oh, no, no, no. I understand that, but that's, that's just what comes top of mind. I mean, if you can make money on six acres in the metro parks, you've got to do it.
Yeah, but you can't.
Just the Augustine.
Melissa Augustine. I have thought a lot about this since the last meeting and I had mentioned, you had brought up Mr. Pearl, the, the fourth district. And I said, why don't we make it outdoor, thinking that that's what's already there and that would fit. And then in digging through the zoning resolution and realizing that outdoor and residential go together and being cornered by one of the residents that lives over there, whose backyard backs up to the driving range. And we've had chronic complaints in the three years that I've been here from this resident. And it's not even a scream car, a scream park complaint. It's the balls are hitting his house. They're hitting his cars. They're hitting his family members. He can't run his lawnmower because there are golf balls all over his yard. I've walked his yard. There are golf balls all over his yard. It's my thought that residential would be best suited there and that the neighbors would probably greatly appreciate that based on the complaints that I've received. That's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Nikki Long, 1941 Parker. You know, I, I'm not by any means a zoning expert, but to me, the idea of changing the zoning on someone's property without them initiating the change does not seem right. Now, I myself don't want to see a gas station or a retail business there. But I also don't think that it would be fair to change the zoning to residential and potentially cause that property value to go down. No, I understand it's by the metro park so that, you know, balances that out, but I don't, I guess I, I just don't think it's right for the township to do that. I think the, what seems to me to be, you know, a better solution would be to create a fourth district, business district, and tailor it to what you think is appropriate for its location in the metro, you know, near the metro parks. You know, certainly with limited uses, maybe you can, I, I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with a retail space there if it was, it was, it was small. You know, like half the size of the building that's there now. I, I don't know. You, you know, you guys are the experts, but to me, it doesn't feel right just to change it to residential to sort of solve this problem. And I think that certainly if, you know, that business is not responsive to complaints of the neighbors, then there should be a, you know, an enforcement mechanism the township can take to, you know, force them to maybe put up a net or do something for that neighbor in the back. But, but I'm just offering my opinion, which is that personally, I don't think it's right to change the zoning to residential.
Aren't we doing the same thing by creating a business district with far limited rights? Now a homeowner has, you know, a business owner has this many things they can do with their property and all of a sudden.
I, it, it's, I see what you're saying. But I, I think that maybe the argument of the township could be stronger if they said, look, we're not gonna change, you know, your zoning from business to residential. We're just gonna limit your uses, which right now your use is limited to outdoor recreation and you know, I'm not sure if they have a food use or whatever, but you know, right now they're, and, and you know, within the past, I don't know, four or five years. I, I don't know how long that's been there, but you know, I think you have a historical precedent by saying you've had this limited business use for X amount of years. We're not gonna change your zone, your zoning to potentially, you know, diminish your property value. We are just gonna limit your potential uses, you know, by creating a fourth business district that.
But aren't you still affecting the value of their property? We're now suggesting that it's open to just about anything if we say only can do these three things.
Yeah.
Still putting restriction on them.
You're right. You're still putting a restriction on.
Unloaded and non-bascore restrictions.
Sure. I mean, it, it still is putting a restriction, but, but it, you know, to do it without the, you know, consulting the property owner and, and even asking, what is your opinion? What would you want? What do you see as, you know, more valuable for your piece of land? To me, it just doesn't seem right.
So first of all, they're always part of the process because anytime that we do a zoning amendment, if we do a math here's a change, they have to be notified. They have to have the opportunity to come before us, go through the public hearing process.
As well as all the adjacent.
As well as all the adjacent. So everyone has the opportunity to participate as we move.
Sure.
The other thing I'll say is let's forget about Buzzard Cove and the business property. Let's look at that two acre lot. Okay? Right now, that is a legal non-conforming use. So if that ceases as a residence, which has happened in town center, that's converted to a business. And now that property owner only has one, two, three things that they can put on that property for two acres outdoor space, they can't use it as a residence anymore and they can't even use it for all of the items that are listed in our business district. So it's a pretty significant burden on those residential properties current, that are currently being used as residential.
But are zoned.
Business. And really, they don't even have enough acreage for a large outdoor space.
Well, what if you gave them the option to, you know, for the, for the lots that are being used now as residential and that are not owned by the Buzzard's Cove folks, give them the option of becoming residential.
Because then you're also taking from Buzzard's Cove.
A hundred feet.
A hundred feet from every single one of those properties. So when you already have those, those riparian setbacks on the eastern side. So when you already have those, those riparian setbacks on the eastern side and now you have a hundred feet on the western side, now you've got a sliver about the width of this room.
So you, you move it from this line, another hundred feet on this side, if you did that. That's why you're, we try to block parcels. As I said, generally, I'm not in favor of rezoning a business to a residence, um, because of the loss of value typically when you see that happen, but here, I'm not sure that.
I don't think Buzzard's Cove is significant.
And that's the only reason I feel like, look, a lot of these are being used as residential and the ones that aren't being used as residential, I'm not so sure that they're going to experience a large loss of value by that rezone.
And they would still have, as long as Buzzard's Cove remained Buzzard's Cove, they could sell it. Could, they could sell it even if it was zoned as Buzzard's Cove and.
And the, the legal non-conforming would transfer with the title.
Right.
In perpetuity.
As long as it's being used.
Using as a driving range, golf course and.
And they would still be able, they would still be able to apply for their, for a conditional use permit to do stuff in the fall or, or would that go away?
Uh, so they were granted the conditional use already, right? Now that we're not discontinuing that as correct.
At first I thought a conditional use didn't go with the land, but it does.
Yeah, absolutely, yes. I can remember when the street report did that.
Yeah, the conditional uses that are currently there, they would be able to continue with. They would not be able to come up with any new conditional uses. Also, you could argue that they just recently became a business. Let's say that we had rezoned this as residential and, or sorry, they just become a re, a restaurant a few years ago. They had some food services, so maybe they've always been a restaurant. Or maybe they just became a restaurant a couple of years ago. If you classified that as a new use when they did that, and if this was unresidential, they would not have been able to do that. So that would be the one downside is they can't expand other business uses.
Okay.
But they cannot expand existing uses.
Correct.
So if, if their pizza continues to do well, if they want to expand that building.
And maybe make like a bigger kitchen or a drive-through or something, they could do that?
Uh, drive-through, I don't believe so.
Okay.
But then, but as far as expanding the building, making a bigger kitchen, if they could get a liquor license, they could turn into an entire Italian restaurant with a putt-putt course and a driving range.
But not a bar or tavern because they're not currently.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
If I may add one more tidbit, they have applied for a liquor permit.
I was gonna say, I thought I saw alcohol in their, in their cooler. I, I've heard that they have.
Yes, there were two liquor permits that came through.
I don't know, I think it, beer, because I think it was in the cooler.
They've applied for it, I don't, we don't follow up, the trustees do not follow up whether they get it or not, but they did apply for one.
They don't have like top shelf stuff. They have beer and stuff, yeah, I thought so.
Just for the record, um, the golf ball thing, hitting neighbors and so forth. We've been working with them and they've put up new nets. They're directional nets so that the golfers can't hit that direction anymore. And since they put those up, we haven't had any complaints. So, uh, they've been very cooperative, yeah, in the last couple of months.
That problem, Tom, has been there for 25 or three years. Before the complaint showed up and I stood there with another member of the BZA for an hour and a half during a busy August and not one ball came over.
Oh, you weren't there when I was golfing.
I used to drive the golf cart, I used to drive the golf cart over there to pick up. I know they come over. I know they come over. Yeah, I know, I know, it's been there a long time.
But they have put.
So if we can, I'd like to continue on with this discussion now. It sounds to me like for the most part, we're leaning towards rezoning that.
Residential, I hope so.
All right, so with that in mind, let's turn to the proposals that we have. And unfortunately, I have all, I have to figure out where I'm at, okay, I'm in the residential. Fastest way, page now maybe?
All right, so this is the beginning of the business, uh, district section, section 6B. I proposed creating a third business district and renaming them general business district, which would be the, uh, 303 West 130th, light business district, which would be, uh, Boston Road 130, West 130th. And then the B3 would be historical town center. Throughout the initial introduction, I really haven't changed much. I did note that as part of the creation of the historical town center, one of the goals is that we're going to maintain the historical nature of town center. Um, part of that is, again, as we've worked towards building some sort of design standards and what some sort of goal in mind as to what we're trying to achieve for town center. The uses, most of them have been carried over. So the B3 for the most part, uh, matches the B2. I, per our discussion last time, within the B2 district, I put automobile service station as a conditional use. There are two gas stations currently on corners over there anyway, so I don't think a gas station on the Hinckley side would be problematic. Don't think there'll be one that goes in there, but I don't see an issue with that. I think that that was the agreement that we had to come to last time or the conclusion.
Over on West 130th and, uh, Boston, there, there is room for growth.
There, there is certainly room for growth, I just don't think it will be another gas station because there's already two over there. But there's definitely room for growth, yeah. Dwelling units above the first floor. I've taken that out per, as we discussed last time, from the B2 district and moved it to the B3 district, which is town center, that's where there are currently dwelling units above the first floor. So I thought we would maintain that within the district. Uh, why, why don't we skip the short-term dwellings right now? That's the new stuff that ties in with the rentals. So we'll skip that for now and revisit that when we get through the rental section. Oh, did I skip it? I must have skipped it. There's, uh, the only other major change, I think, related to, there's, oh, there it is. Hospitals and senior residential facilities, I did not carry those over to the B3 district. That was something we discussed and agreed upon last time. The only new items I think that we should discuss tonight are indoor and outdoor recreation. We included those, indoor recreation has been, always been a conditional use within the B2 district and I carried that over to the B3 district. Last, at our last discussion, due to, uh, the Buzzard's Cove, we decided to make outdoor recreation a conditional use within the B2 and the B3 district. As it stands today, I would assume that we can remove outdoor recreation from at least the B3 district. Uh, it's never been allowed in the B2 district, which will become the B3 district, so I don't know that we need to expand it in that direction. I think that they are only reason for incorporating outdoor recreation within the B3 district was for.
So we didn't create a legal non-conforming.
Yeah. Yeah. So are we okay with that? Perfect. Outside of that, uh, within the lot and air requirements, I just copied the B2 language into the B3. So there's no changes from the B2 to B3. Uh, similarly in the setbacks, it's just been a copy over. So the B2 and the B3 maintain the exact same, um, requirements for now. And the same requirements are, exist in the minimum parking setbacks as well. Other than that, it was just cleanup of language to incorporate the addition of the B3. So there really hasn't been too much change other than a limitation of the allowed uses within the B3 district. Go ahead.
This might be splitting hairs and I apologize, is I just needed clarification for myself. Outdoor recreation, if someone has a bar in the, in the historic town center district and in the backyard of that bar.
Sam Bowden.
Exactly, or, and they're, they're, they're paying, people haven't paid to rent the courts and that kind of stuff. Is that considered outdoor recreation as a business? But then it would be, so then they wouldn't be able to do it?
That's how I would interpret it.
It's a supplemental use, the primary. That's kind of what I think. But that's a really good question. And that's why, it, it, it's splitting hairs, I just want to know how the, how the commission in general is leaning because I mean, if, to, to Bill's point, if it's, if it's a, um, supplemental use, do we just go along with it where someone pays five bucks and throws a hatchet at a wall? That's fine, after drinking a few beers. There's no better way to do it. Or, I mean, or do they just say, hey, it's free, but it's a three-drink minimal?
I don't think we're.
You know? I, I don't, I don't know, I'm just kind of curious about that because it's, it's something that, I mean, you go to Panini's and they got the, the Jenga, not Panini's, uh, on tap and they got the two-by-four Jenga lined up and they get, they used to have the cornhole out there. It's outdoor recreation, kind of.
Yeah, I agree, good point. Do you, uh, have you done anything over here with, with the outdoor pods and things?
No.
You're aware they're there?
No.
Okay, there are, they are there.
I think we just created a new business to town center.
So do we? Currently outdoor recreation is not permitted within town center, are you suggesting we can? I, I, I just kind of want to know what Ham's interpretation of this would be because ultimately he's the one who's going to determine like, all right, is this something we have to pursue or not?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have the.
Yeah.
As you say, it's not really splitting air to go to. I guess.
But I think, I do think Bill brought up a great point, that's a supplemental use. It's not, it's a primary monetary driver.
Yeah, let, let me rephrase my word, supplemental is probably a bad term. It's incidental to the main, it's incidental to the main use, it's.
Well, if you got more seating outside than inside, it's hardly incidental any longer.
Yeah.
Let me rephrase that, could be non-in, not incidental, depending on the time of year.
And you can also say in terms of, it depends on the size of the lot that's being used for that versus other things.
So it's a case-by-case basis then?
I think it would be a case-by-case.
Okay, so then I'd be fine scrapping it and, and saying it's, it's just not permissible because as long as there are ways for us to say like, okay, yeah, you've got a, you've got a 6,000-foot building, but you've got one lane for, there's, there's actually a great bar in, um, Cleveland, Velvet Tango Room, I don't know, you're up there, but they have like a little, uh, putting green in their backyard. And if someone puts something like that along with a bar, like it's outdoor recreation, but not really. So if, if we'd be fine with something like that, I'm not, I have no problem with striking.
Well, at the microbrewery in Medina, where they have all kinds of games inside.
Yeah, but that's inside, that's inside.
But still, isn't that recreation?
Well, then you could argue that drinking in general is recreation.
So, so you missed your AA meeting, huh?
Bill, I take it very seriously.
You're starting to hit below the belt, buddy.
So where are we on this? Do we want to, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I didn't mean to open a hornet's nest there, like I.
No, but it's a, it's a really valid issue.
So what's the opposition to have an outdoor recreation as a conditional?
That's what my thoughts are.
I, I know, I hate to even bring that up because I know we kind of hashed through that in the last, last conversation, but.
Not to include it in.
The, the only downside I could see is remember that once we make something conditional, it's be virtually allowed. It's, it's very difficult for us to completely deny it, we can try to control what's happening, but we, it's hard to do an outright denial. So envision what would be the worst outdoor recreation. And think, could we do something about it?
Well, if, if, let's say you make outdoor recreation for the pods, okay? The next guy come along wants to do something else, that's a change of use. Well, the conditional goes along for what was there, not just outdoor recreation in general. I, I just.
Whoa. Trapper ski shooting?
Yeah.
Target practice, that's outdoor recreation?
That's what I talked about last time.
Yeah.
That's right.
And that's where. That would be a huge problem.
I, I think this problem or this situation, it does exist here, is going to go away, one way or the other, on its own.
So we should just leave this go?
In my opinion.
I don't think this has ever been an issue in however long we've had B2 and, you know, outdoor recreation is not being a conditional use within the B2. So do we really need to revisit this?
Yeah, do we need to add it when people haven't come to us previously and said, I really want to build this and I have outdoor recreation?
Right.
I, maybe we just leave it as no, nothing and.
Right.
You know, if, if it is a supplemental use to an existing business, they can ask and, you know, then, then we can let the BZA make the call.
I thought, um, the adult daycare, didn't they try to put a volleyball thing going a while ago? Ben, it's been about five or six years, maybe, maybe longer.
Have they been open for five or six years?
There was something else other than that adult daycare before that. But I believe they, they tried. They did try, right? They, they had something going on.
So I will say that, that what, that the outdoor daycare was not a conditional use, I think it was a legal non-conforming. So that's actually a completely different scenario than this, which is conditional.
Okay.
And, I mean, when, when you're looking at it, is if it's a conditional use, hey, you can, you can be a bar or a club, then it's not necessarily an expansion of that conditional use by having some sort of outdoor activity.
Right.
It becomes a completely different conditional use when you're saying, hey, you know what, we're only going to do this outdoor activity.
Or when it becomes a, a large portion of your own property or a large portion of the revenue that's brought in or a large portion.
Mr. Manley, I, I mean, you spent like 36 years on the BZA, right?
Right.
Pretty close.
Well, probably 28 years.
But, uh, yeah, so I guess the question is when, when you have a question that comes up like this, how, how does the BZA look at it and say, is it a factor of square footage? Is it a factor of receipts? Is it a factor of time? Is it a factor of what draws people? Like, how do you determine when it becomes a substantial piece of the business?
We, as I recall, first of all, uh, my, talking, what I would do is I tried to base it on, on size, how much activity was going to be in, in this conditional use versus what's there. And, uh, the other things I would generally come and talk to the zone, the commission board, the zoning commission, who've put these things in force if there were still members around and asked what their intent was. And then ask them to come to the BZA and testify.
Don't you have to say a caddy shack, for example? A volleyball court outside there?
Do they?
So I, I think it's.
It happens, it, it's, it happens, right? That's, that's what my point is, that they're in existence.
Well, it was a driving range for the longest time, so.
Yeah, it was.
Which would have, which.
Caddy shack is also in a B1, which allows.
Well, it has conditional, so chances are they do have a conditional permit for outdoor entertainment. So switch from a driving range to volleyball pits and, and is that something that you would need to change that conditional for?
I think strictly speaking, but that's kind of splitting hairs.
I, I don't, I don't know that you would because it's still outdoor recreation if you've already got a conditional for outdoor recreation. But again, I think we'd have to defer to.
I don't think that you get a conditional for outdoor recreation, you get conditional for certain.
For what you're using.
I, I think it goes back to how the conditional was, was written and executed because remember they, the person requesting the conditional approves the language that, yes, we'll live by this. We, there's, well, I assume they still use, we had a form they signed and, yes, we agree to all these different conditions, if you will.
They're going to be gone soon anyhow. They're going to be gone soon anyhow, right?
Oh, caddy shack.
So, yeah. We're, we're now an hour into this discussion. Are we?
We're making headway, believe it or not.
Oh, no, we haven't even got to short-term rental house, short-term rentals yet.
Pass.
No, I, I like, I like the point that you make is, is it's a conditional use to begin with. So as part of the conditions of that, that use, if I'm saying, hey, I want to put, you know, whatever, and I want to put a bar in, right? And I want to have a volleyball court. I mean, can you not make it a part of that condition at that?
If I were there, as long as it was all laid out and if the volleyball court showed up later, I'd ask Tom to go out there and, uh, and serve notice that this wasn't agreed to. You're, you can come back in front of us again and ask.
That's, I was going to ask that. So I come in, I get the bar and then a year later I'm like, man, I sure do love this pickleball, right? Pretty fancy stuff. I'm gonna put a pickleball court in.
And obviously the first question I'd ask, why didn't you do this all at the same time? But no, I think, I think they would have the right to come back.
So strike outdoor recreation from B three altogether?
Yes.
And B two?
Uh.
It was added to B two as well.
It was added to B two strictly for.
What we're doing.
It was added to B three strictly for that, but because.
We were expanding it into B two because it's an area that if someone wants to do something, they can't.
It's more.
Permissible.
Right.
More in line with what's already going on in that.
Up in that area. More, there's more noise up there. There's.
There's more light. Yep. So if somebody wanted to build a uh, uh, pinnacle soccer complex or something.
That would make more sense up there than it would in town center.
It would involve water sports.
You spent plenty of time.
Yeah, it's both.
So keep it in the B two?
I'm leaning towards keep it in the B two, strike it from the B three.
Agreed.
I'm good with that.
Perfect. Okay, so I think that wraps up the business discussion unless, hang on, unless anyone else has any discussion.
Why do we not want dwelling units above the first floor in B two?
Good question. There are none right now in the B two. There's only in the B three, so I thought it made sense to continue. I figured that the reason that that was permissible within the B two from the original, you know, originally was because town center is part of B two. So since we moved town center out of the B two, I figured it made sense to carry that with town center, but you don't have that same idea of a multi-use complex with residential in the B two district. So I didn't see a reason to have it in there, especially considering the recent concern with apartment style housing in general.
Okay.
And that, that fits the spirit of when we added that in, it was more geared towards the downtown area and mixed use.
Well, the, the corner building, of course, had three apartments in it.
Which one?
The, where the general store used to be, the.
Pinky Commons.
Oh.
What, what do you call it now?
Pinky Commons. Carl's dad was the creator.
I think there's only two apartments in there now. I'm not sure, but but there were three at one point, many, 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 many years ago.
Okay.
So are we settled on?
Yeah, I think that's, that's good.
Perfect.
I think so.
Well, except for the.
Wait a minute, Cindy wants to talk.
Short-term, long-term.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So Cindy Engelmann. So I have a, I just, I like the way it's all been laid out. I have a question though, back on, um, under the retail services for B three, that it's, um, retail and completely enclosed buildings, less than 12,000 square feet is permitted. And I recall a couple of months ago, we had that discussion about this, you know, I guess it's the size of the building versus the entities or the tenants that are in there. And should that somehow be maybe footnoted to say that, you know, that certain businesses or whatever are not to exceed X number of square feet in a building area so that you can have a 11,000 square foot building, but it has three tenants because you're going to go back to.
It's a great question. I've had a lot of discussions on this and I actually am not so sure that our current language is legal, if it was challenged. Um, the reason being is because that 12,000 square foot limitation is not tied to the size of the lot at all. So on a 20 acre lot, you could still only have 12,000 square foot of retail. On a small lot, you could have 12,000 square feet of retail. Normally when you see zoning, it's on a per unit basis. So on a per acre basis or something like that, that's why for everything else you see the site, buildable size is like 80% of the lot because, so I intentionally did not touch this because I don't want to go through the review process and have it scrutinized and us have more problems with this. So I left that as is intentionally.
So, so my question would kind of go to the same concern in the Bellis Hinkley Hills area with 11,000 square feet, 7,000 square feet. Again, you could end up with a retail chain discount store, whatever, or whatever service.
We're, we're favoring, our proposed amendment is going to be moving that to residential.
No, I'm saying though in town center.
Town center.
In town center as a B three, you could end up with a McDonald's. I'm sorry, I'm not picking on, let's just say. And is that what you intend for downtown Hinkley?
We'll have more success, I think, with design standards than we will a limitation on the retail or restaurant limitations is what I'm, how I would approach that because again, unless your suggestion is remove retail altogether, I'm not so sure that we'll be able to accommodate what you're hoping to achieve.
Right. And I'm not certain what all retail, you know, as I stand here, what that might mean, but, um.
As we put this together, the restrictions, there's, there's a code that you must, zoning must be involved with the health, welfare and safety of the residents. So as you're putting all these numbers in and suggesting this for this and this, you, you really have to think, okay, where, where does the health and where does the welfare and where does the safety come? Now, some things are easy to do. I think I can leave some of this stuff and, uh, as I recall, Drug Mart needed some extra and you leave it in the hands of the BCA.
And you could say safety, but remember that the 12,000 is not tied to the square footage of the lot, the size of the lot, and that's the problem with it. You could say, look, from a safety and a welfare standpoint, we want a certain density per acre. But we're not achieving that with that limitation of 12,000 square feet because you could pack 12,000 on a 0.5 acre lot, 12,000 on the next adjoining 0.5 acre lot and so on and so forth. And you have a very high density of 12,000 square feet, you know.
Right, right.
But you could have one 20 acre lot and you're still only allowing 20, 12,000 square feet.
Right.
That's why really you do things in relation to the lot size, not.
And that's why I was going to the per tenant basis limitation.
Even that, that would be so, uh, with, within an hour, I could get around that. You just, you, you start a different EIN, rent out the, the adjacent space and cut in a hole. It's the same exact store, but it's two different.
I think that 12,000 though was, uh, is part of that comprehensive plan, having a small town appearance and stuff. It, it fits into the comprehensive plan language. And I don't know it offhand. I'd have to go back, but I think I recall something about that.
Well, yeah.
You'd be more familiar with the comprehensive plans.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'm when I think the comprehensive plan speaks to the small town feel and the small town feel, generally you think of, you know, a small, narrow storefronts, you know, multiple different types of businesses of which retail certainly could be in there. I mean, you could have a little clothing shop. You could have, um, you know, a little jewelry shop or whatever. So I wouldn't want to say no retail. It's just that it's more of that like a local, you don't, to encourage maybe like a local business, um, kind of development.
I suspect that the entire commission has that same goal in mind. I think that we are struggling with can you do it with a use basis? Because to your point, you know, a, a building with a five, you know, four tenants of 5,000 square feet or whatever it is, right? Does that, how does that more beneficial from health, safety and general welfare than one building with 12, 20,000 square feet? And that's where you'd have to articulate, why would multiple tenants be more beneficial from health, safety and general welfare than one large tenant? And it's very hard, I think, to articulate that, um, in that regard, but you could do it through design standards and that's where we continue to do it.
Okay, all right. I'll wait until then.
It will be a while, but I think that that's.
Oh, I'm definitely in time.
Now are we okay moving forward?
Assuming we're going to come back and address, um, short-term dwelling and short-term owner occupied.
Correct.
One thing I do actually have to say is the short-term owner occupied just off the, off the top, shouldn't even be in a conditional in B one.
Yeah, I, I've flagged both of those because I also don't know whether we should say short-term dwelling rentals, which like even within town center, we require dwelling units to be above the first floor, but as it's written right now, the short-term does not require it to be above the first floor, so maybe we want to deal with that. But let's start with the definitions, give it a spark our way back through and we'll get to, um, conditional uses. So the definitions are on. I think the definitions have been mostly hammered out. So I don't think that we should have to hopefully spend too much time on these definitions. Are they not in there? Okay, they're on the screen. We have defined a short-term dwelling rental as any dwelling that is rented in its entirety for not more than 30 consecutive days by persons other than the primary resident, from which the primary resident, owner or other interested party receives monetary compensation and the primary resident is not present and personally living on the premise during the time of the rental. We've defined a short-term owner occupied dwelling rental as any dwelling of which a portion is rented for not more than 30 consecutive days by persons other than the primary resident, from which the primary resident, owner or other interested party receives monetary compensation. Um, I just want to note one thing here. One of the drivers that brought us to revisit this again was a comment last time by Heidi, I forget your last name, I'm sorry. Goodvine?
Yeah.
Ms. Goodvine, she was about a short-term rental that was on Mattingly. And I've looked at that listing and that listing actually says a minimum of 28 days. And so arguably that rental, assuming they are renting out for 28 plus days at a time, might not even meet the definition of a short-term rental anymore. Uh, because it will be over 30 days. Go ahead.
If someone were to put a rental out there that says minimum 30 days rental time, no penalty for early termination, no penalty for this, that or the other, um, to be a way to kind of skirt that. So, right.
And that's what I just was giving this comment because, you know, regardless of how we define a short-term rental, I, I don't know that we'll be able to, you know, prevent some of the things that have been discussed and that we're trying to prevent. I will also say that, um, the legislation continues to be pending with the state legislator that might take away the township's ability to, you know, to zone for short-term rentals. Um, my understanding is that there's only a slim chance of it passing and becoming law. But there's still, it's still pending and there's still the possibility that we'll go through all this process and we'll have to revisit again and strike through everything that we just added to the text. Okay. Are there any other comments on the definitions? I think we spent about two meetings on the definitions, so we should be okay there. Yeah, I think it was six total. We got them through the definitions and we had two left.
I didn't count them, but I did know.
All right. So if we jump down to residential districts, and I think that this is where we hit a stumbling block last time and we decided that we may, might want to postpone any further discussion of it is in the residential districts, uh, I think I've made both in both the R one and the R two districts, I've listed short-term dwelling rentals and short-term owner occupied dwelling rentals as conditionally permitted uses. Uh, there was some discussion last time of should these be permitted uses? Should they be conditional or should they not be permitted at all? The compromise approach obviously is a conditional where we're starting to record some information on it and then we'll discuss the conditional standards next. But that's, that's where we, you know, that's where we ended up last time is we're not sure what we want to do with these in the residential districts. Go ahead.
Are we jumping topic to topic or do we intend to go back through or to these one or two changes?
I'm going by topic as opposed to by.
So i- in my review, I just have notes all over here. I'm, I'm just not sure about this. And then I got to the, I got to the conditions that you listed and I made a note and I got to find them now.
Do we want to jump to the conditions? The, the conditions I think are in chapter seven, uh, which is where the conditional permit language is located. It's running back, so make sure you're looking. So here are the conditions. There are separate conditions for a short-term dwelling rental and for a short-term owner occupied dwelling rental. For a short-term dwelling rental, uh, we specified that, uh, no renter shall be permitted to sleep in accessory building in section six R one or six R two. So you can't make a barn into a Airbnb or, you know, a camper or something in your backyard. No renter shall be permitted to sleep outside or intense campers or other similar, um, temporary structures. And so you can't make a temporary structure either. Uh, oh no, there we go. The maximum number of renters to be a- accommodated shall be equal to the number of bedrooms occupied by the renters multiplied by a factor of two. Uh, that's just limit sizing of the number of people in the home, um, from a safety perspective, obviously. The owner shall retain for two years and upon requests make available to the township zoning inspector or law enforcement officials records to demonstrate compliance with this section, including but not limited to primary residency of renter, name of renter responsible for the reservation and/or who rented the unit each night, dates of the rental and duration of the stay. That's basically the record keeping function that we have there. And two years ties into to what we're going to propose as a potential amendment to a discontinuance of use if you, um, aren't using a conditional use for a period of time, which will be two years. So that's where the two-year mark came from.
Well.
Go ahead.
Suzanne and I talked about this paragraph today.
This paragraph or?
I'm sorry.
The, the short-term?
Uh, yeah, the record keeper.
That's what I thought. Okay.
And, uh, we, uh, we don't see how that's possible for us. I mean, we don't go into somebody's home and ask them to open the record book and I don't know that our police department wants to do that. So I think you have to look at that very carefully.
I, the goal that I had in mind was, you know, for short-term, for the senior housing, it's a very similar thing in that they're required to keep records so that you're able to inspect those to confirm that it is in fact seniors living there. And so you have the right to inspect it. You're not required to inspect it. You're not required to capture the documents, but you have the right to. And this is the same thing here in that the owner is required and obligated to keep the records to provide you the opportunity to review them if you so choose, if there's a problem, but not to put an onerous on you that you're required to go out and actively capture those if you don't want to.
The difference is it's federal law that that's a senior housing. They, they are required by federal to keep records. And then we have the, uh, the ability or the intention to ask those records, which we plan to do, that keeps a, but, but in this case. But, but in this case, township's passing along, I'm not sure you can do that.
I, I a hundred percent agree with that, that it's, that that is the key difference. Like, I don't, I don't even know that, could we even legally require this for somebody to keep record like that? Like what, what gives us the power to say you got to keep records? What's the difference of that? Or what if as part of the condition to that philosophical bar and they wanted a volleyball court, I want to, I want you to keep records of everybody that played volleyball on that? Like, I don't, I think that would be laughed out of court. That, that was one of my comments that I had.
Maybe we should certainly check with the record, see if we do, but.
Yeah, well, any amendments we make will go through legal and be reviewed and.
Like, I understand the spirit of why it's here. I just, I'm very pessimistic that we can even do that.
And I think that that's one of the challenges of this regulation of short-term housing in general is, you know, how are we enforcing this and how are we even identifying short-term rentals?
Well, so we can talk about that if you want to make it a conditional use. So anybody that wants to have a, a, a short-term rental, we're going to say, sure, you can do that, come on down, pay the fee, all right, spend the money, go in front of the BZA, get your conditions, it's cookie cutter, get your, get your stamp. There's the three conditions you have to meet. Correct me if I'm wrong here.
I agree with it completely.
And, and be on your way.
Like if it's just cookie cutter, then why are we even addressing it in the book? I mean, the.
And that's maybe, maybe the path I'm steering, I, I don't want to say steering us down, that's just, that's my perspective on it. It's like, i- if we're going to do that, I mean, now I'm putting a, I'm putting a burden on, on the resident, like, why? Like, why even go through this? Right, make it permitted or better yet.
Well, it's a business at this point, business, with a business, you have certain expenses and expenditures, which you're basically passing on anyhow to the, to the renter.
If it's a business, it shouldn't be going on in the residential district.
Well, we have some home-based businesses within.
We have lots of home-based businesses.
So you can count this as a home-based business.
What if I make jewelry in my basement and sell it on Etsy?
There's places doing things like that.
What if you cut hair? Should we allow that?
I don't know.
That's also going on.
But I know we've also told people they can't do it.
But, but again, it's also going on.
What's that? Dentist, dentistry.
Well, like I hid behind that thing that we permit medical care and, you know, I remember that one. But we have lots of businesses go here. I mean, you, until he knows about something and somebody complains, because remember, zoning reacts, Tom's office reacts more or less, and until somebody complains of something, he's not even going to know.
So then why?
Am I doing this, what's he going to prevent? What would he prevent?
Well, we, we know we have home-based businesses who haven't come forward and, and again, we, we, well, our code never was, but that's been tested in the courts under the health, welfare and safety of certain businesses, not all businesses perhaps, but in certain cases. But there are lots of businesses here. When Terry built that thing up there, there were people that were hopeful that that's where all these small businesses would set up their shops, but they never did. They, they continued to, you know, in their home. And do you blame them? They're, they're sitting on two plus acres and, and, and I should say many cases, in two plus acres and they figure this is my place.
I don't think we have a definition of what type of business we have.
No, we don't, we don't. Just, it's, we have, we have a home base, I forget what the two are, but one is if you have employees coming in and one if you don't. That was to satisfy the attorneys and accountants that worked at home on their own.
There's some restrictions about how many people come in.
Correct, correct, correct. But a lot of these that I'm familiar with, there's really no one coming in, they're doing it there themselves, they go down to the post office or UPS or somebody picks up and they're doing it back and forth.
And so now that, but if, if this is truly a business, then you have people, you have customers coming in on a regular basis.
The one, for the most part, other than hair cutting and another one, I, I, they, they don't have, it's all done.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying this would be. If, if we're calling this a home-based business, you're going to have customers, renters.
Correct.
Coming in on a regular basis.
That's why I, I just think it is.
I mean, like honestly, if it's, if it's a home-based business, then we have to discuss, all right, are we even going to permit it?
Or not? And I think that's, that's really where all this started out with the original definition.
I think that the point I'm trying, that I'm just trying to make here is whether you have it in here or not, it all leads to the same thing. If we don't do it, you're going to have somebody renting a house next door being, having the potential to be noisy. If the person comes in and gets the condition, you might have some good customers and then you might get the one that's noisy and he's not going to do anything about that proactively. It's, it's going to be a reaction, you're going to get a noise complaint.
And by, by not having, whether it's conditional or not in the book, then there's no way that he can actually do anything about it anyway.
What's he gonna, what's he gonna do about it?
Because if, if it is a, if it's not permissible, then he can go out, make, obviously there's going to be a complaint, that gets lodged with the, the, with the police, I assume, if they're doing something that.
I don't think zoning, zoning complaints don't get sent to the police.
No, we would, we would send them two letters, send to trustees, they would send them a letter, then we would send it to the county prosecutor.
And three years later, something.
I'm just saying, up and down, right through here, three or four places that that's been going on for 20 years, 15 years at least, and they're still there, it's still there.
So.
And it's, I, I don't know. I, I don't feel strongly about having this in here personally, but.
I don't either. The only comment that I will make is that we actually have surprisingly had a fair number of inquiries this year as to whether air, short-term rentals are permitted within the township. I think we've had at least three, Tom?
Yeah.
At least three inquiries.
How many, how many residents are in this township?
There, there are actually people looking for homes in Hinckley. And so the, what I, where I was going with that is that it would be nice to have somewhere to point them, to give them certainty as to whether it is or it isn't permitted, conditionally permitted, whatever. But I do think it's very challenging from both an enforcement standpoint and from, you know, a drafting standpoint to deal with short-term housing.
So if we go to the path of putting it in with conditions, we'll take the first three of those. So yes, come on down, pay the fee, get your rubber stamp, don't let people sleep in your barn, no tents or campers, and you can have the number of bedrooms times two. I just, I don't see what value we're adding here.
And really, the first one, I think you could argue isn't, isn't allowed anyway within a residential district because you can't have people living within an accessory building, correct, Tom?
Right.
And campers and tents, I, I, I think, I guess you can currently, you could have that within your, no?
No, I don't think so, you know.
As a, as a resident.
You can only have one.
One residence.
So that, so, but I think we could remove the record keeping requirement, okay? I mean, if there's been a complaint, what, would you ask them if you were investigating it? Do you have any records showing how many people you've had been here? Have you had other complaints, right? We'd ask the police department, any complaints?
I'd start with the police department.
But I mean, so it's not really necessary to go have this in here is what I'm trying to say.
Agreed.
Because if you were looking at a complaint, you would have your, you would do your investigative work, the groundwork to it.
It becomes a, it becomes an issue only when it becomes an issue and you have a pattern at that single resident.
And then what's going to happen? They're not going to.
What does the BZA do that allows them to remove that conditional permit for them to actually continue?
If they don't, if they don't meet the conditions. And again, you go through this process.
Right.
That he talked about this. I don't think it ha, I, oh, a long time ago, we should have our own attorney here to go after these different situations because it takes a while operating on the system that the prosecutor requires. But if we could get, or get a couple of these straightened out or we get, recover some of the money we spend, after a while, we're, we're spread and you just can't do some of these things. But as it is now, we have a beautiful book and 99% of the people follow the thing, but there's that 1% that makes life miserable for their neighbors. And, you know, if you, if I'm renting, uh, renting my house out and you come to me and want to see my records, you can bet I probably have an attorney who's going to tell me or come down and talk to somebody and say, show me in your regulations where they have to do this. So, you know.
Can I get a motion to extend?
I move to extend.
For how long?
10 minutes.
Thank you.
Motion approved. Are you seconding that, Manley?
Yeah, sure.
Seconded by Manley, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi, all opposed?
But Dave, if there's a problem with somebody's residence and they're having a party or are loud and the mini bike goes all hours of the night, what do you, you know, you have the same, what are the recourses? You complain, you go to the.
What happens, assuming it's, we're talking nighttime.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, the police, the police will come out and most people will cooperate. There are those.
Right.
That 1%, if you will, it tells you where to go.
Exactly. But you have the same issue whether it's a, a, a single residential home or if it's someone at B and B, you're going to have the similar issues.
Again, that 1%, I would agree.
Okay.
To, to what Mr. Mozzula was saying, as part of a condition, could they say, and you'll never have complaints, the first complaint?
X number of complaints.
Yes.
I, I don't know about that. Again, let's go back to the health, welfare and safety. I, I guess you could argue that on the welfare and the neighbors, yeah.
But then, but to the flip side, if you have a neighbor that just doesn't want one operating that you complain every single time someone's ever.
That's, that's also true.
I can see from a noise perspective, like for a condition, you can put that it has to be quiet after 11:00 PM, but again, how do you enforce that?
And how do you define?
Really, how do you define noise? And we had a noise standard and it was, it didn't work and it was removed. You know, you can put light, conditions on lighting, but how?
But I mean, I, I will, I will say at the same time, um, we, we had a lot of complaints about noise from the screen park and when the police were up there, they said, yes, it's noisy. There, there wasn't a, oh, let me pull out my, uh, my decibel and, or measure it, measure the decibel, it's like, no, it's lousy, loud as everything up here. So, yeah, that we're, we're going to go and talk to them. Um, I, I, I think for the most part, we can tell the difference between noisy and not with our ears. Now, is the owner going to end up saying, all right, fine, let's go to court?
That's civil.
What's that?
That's civil then.
Yes, it would be a civil court. It would have to be civil, it can't really be criminal.
I, I'm still not sure I am reading whether this commission is in favor of a permitted use or a conditional use or removing it entirely from the book. I'm not doing anything with it.
I think we're trying to figure that out.
That's where we need to start.
I, I think another, another option is also to just define it and restrict it and say, no, you, you can't do short-term rentals. That's another option.
Well, how do we restrict it? There's no, there's, there's nothing in our book where we say, you know, restrict it. You know, there's permitted, there's conditional and then anything that's not permitted or conditional.
Yes, there is. Marijuana dispensers are not permitted in townships.
So you're saying separate section, like sexually oriented businesses and?
You're, you're, no, what I'm saying is you're saying it is not, there, there's nothing in the book that is not.
Marijuana permitted. Isn't marijuana permitted down on 130th?
No, it was approved by the trustees not to be permitted, but that was through trustee resolution.
Yeah, as permitted by ORC, the trustees could do that.
Right.
And that was explicitly called out.
It's not zoning.
And that's actually true of our adult material as well, I think, is we have it in our book, but it's to match.
But it's only permissible in specific areas.
Right, yes.
Yeah, definitely, yes, that's correct.
And that's, that's another option. Just say, okay, well, short-term rental is only permissible in the I-2 district. I think we have five minutes.
I, I need some direction on this one because we'll have at least one more meeting because again, as I said, we can't really do a, we can do a motion at this meeting, but even if we did, we would have to do a tabling of the, uh, continuance of the public meeting because of when planning services lines up with our calendar. So we have another month, but what I want to know is.
I think we need a work session between here and there because we haven't even gotten through all of the changes that we're talking about. And I think we're still going to spend quite a bit of time on this one.
I agree.
I'm okay with that. I agree, I agree. So do we want to stop now and have a work and then schedule a work session?
Yeah.
Resume next time?
Let's look at our schedules so we can get that on.
Perfect.
Two weeks, two weeks from, if, if it's something's available.
I am.
Let me look at my busy schedule.
I'm out the week of the 15th.
So perfect time to do it, let's do it on the 18th.
And when?
On the 18th. Marcus will be gone.
Okay, if, he's, he's out here, he's.
I'm not here.
He's not here.
Marcus. That's why, that's why Mr. Mozzula was recommending that. The kind gentleman that he is.
Absolutely.
Why don't we, what's the next one, 25th?
The 25th.
26th?
Yep.
If it's available, why not?
I'm available on the 25th.
I am not.
We don't, uh, what about? What about?
Does it have to be a Thursday?
No.
No.
What about the 11th, next week?
Is that enough?
I'm not here. For real.
How next week?
Fisher, I think the trustees have to approve that we will pay you for a work session. I don't know if that's in the organizational meeting, but if I'm going to pull it up right now.
Yeah, double check that.
And then worst case, we table it and let's all at least make a point to, like each get our facts or get our thoughts in line and let's hash through it in the next conversation. But there's also a number of other changes in here. I think it's pertinent that we go through each and every one of those.
Right, there.
Yeah, I, I, I think we need the work session because it's, we need more time to do it. So, and, and I'm, I will make myself available, only, I will make myself available. Any of those dates, any dates?
I'm available anytime except for the week of the 15th, I'm out.
The, the only day of the week that doesn't work for me are Wednesdays.
Dave, are you gone for a whole week? Out, let me take this, are you gone for the whole week on the 11th?
No, I'll be back Thursday night, but I have, I have a meeting that I've missed for the last two months I got to get to.
Okay, so you're going eight, nine, 10 and 11.
11 is, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we can't do that week. All right, 15, 16, 17, 18 and 19.
That's the week I'm out.
You're out.
22nd through 26th.
I'm out that week.
That whole week?
Yeah.
We can always do it on the 12th, it's a Friday. Or we can do it the week of our, of our meeting because.
I, I, I don't want to wait that close. I, I would go for the 12th. If we do it close to the meeting, I don't think we're going to get it all accomplished.
Is there a gun to our heads to get this out?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think we, why not start a meeting next time at 6:30?
Hour, oh.
Well, a half hour.
That's a half hour. Do you really think a half hour is going to help?
Doesn't matter, but you could cut it off because this is going to go on longer.
What I'll, what I'll say is if we don't, don't make a motion at our September meeting, we missed the cutoff for the submission to November for this planning commission. So the first opportunity that the planning commission will have for this is the 7th and I think our meeting in December will be.
In December?
Yeah, because that would be the next one. December would be the first, so the first opportunity that we'll have to have a public hearing on this will be January 1st, or January.
Okay, so that's why.
Yeah, for our organizational meeting.
Correct, yep.
It'd be nice if we could fit in something on the 12th, time on the 12th, it is a Friday.
Your 10 minutes is up.
I'm giving up a date night, okay, the 12th.
I, I'm okay with the 12th, I'm also okay with the week of our meeting. Again, we're allotted in the same amount of time regardless, so whether we have. So whether we have it sooner or later, we still have the same amount of time.
We're still gonna be pushed back till this, to January?
No, no, no. What he's saying is if we have a meeting on the 12th or on August 30th, two days before our normal meeting, it's still two meetings between now and then.
Okay.
And again, we already have a working document, so it's just a matter of us.
I, I'm okay with the 30th as well.
Is that the consensus of August 30th?
I don't know.
I can make that work.
30th. Is the 30th a, it's a Tuesday. Does anyone have meetings on Tuesday?
Trustee meeting.
Perfect.
Trustee meeting is the 16th only for August.
Perfect, so do we?
Is that okay for you, Bill?
I think so.
I think it is.
Mr. Manley?
I'm fine.
He's good.
All right, so we'll have a work session on August the 30th at, do you want to do 7?
Sure.
At 7:00 PM. We'll have our regular meeting on the September the 1st at 7:00 PM. I'll, I do need a motion for five minutes. Five minutes removed. Removed by Spellman. Seconded by Fisher. All in favor?
Aggrandingly.
All opposed? No? Perfect. I think we'll be out of here quicker than five minutes. Uh, I have nothing else on the chair's report. Anything from Ms. Crew?
I, I don't have any.
Mr. Merzullo?
Oh, wait, do you want to know about the Westchester?
No, let, let, no, go ahead.
No.
Manley?
I already made my pitch for the Star-Bellman.
There's the historical thing coming up.
Perfect. Um.
Thank you.
Trustee, what should we do with the design standard consultant? Do we have time to deal with it on the work session once we get through that or?
Deal with it at the work session.
Perfect, we'll deal with that at the work session. So there's no other business, any comments from the floor?
Dawn Livingston, 784 Stony Hill. And I'm sorry I was late to the meeting. Um, I just had a question regarding the review of the Stony Hill project. Was there any literature sent out? I live four houses down from there. I didn't know anything about this.
Yeah, I don't think that the neighboring residents are notified on site plan.
Yeah.
Really?
No, only for, uh, there's certain things that you want.
I would have loved to have dealt with that gentleman.
Well, he'll be back. He's got a final site plan here still, and he has a final flat review from Medina Planning Services. So you have at least.
Do you know those dates?
They haven't been set.
They haven't been set yet, okay.